Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 24th, 2024 work session of the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of the British Isles. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody, for coming once again for a fun-filled evening of planning. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Hetzke?
Hetzke here.
Aiken?
Aiken here.
Canower?
Canower here.
Tidings?
Tidings here.
Sangster?
Sangster here.
O'Connor?
O'Connor here.
Prinzing?
Prinzing here.
Ferrigno here.
All right, we have minutes from the October 10th meeting. Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to review them. And can we entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Tidings second.
Terry's on his game. Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right, Doug. We go through tabled applications.
Tabled application number one, 2488 Browncroft Boulevard, the accessory building. So, we did receive revised plans from the applicant and their engineer. They're getting closer to... We've texted PC TV. When they started the meeting, that TV's still live, but these TVs all went down. So, we're going to see...
So, we can't see any plans or anything?
Yeah.
Hey, Brian, can you...
Remote work? Has anybody tried that?
I turned them off and turned it back on again. They just lost... When you started the meeting, they lost signal.
Yeah.
The big TV's still working, but the smaller ones are just showing a black screen.
I am going to put this on a white shot. I'm the only one here, so you guys can continue, but you will be on a white shot.
Okay. Everybody remember that. You're all on TV now. Everybody. Okay. Let's... We can continue for now. Everybody can imagine the site plan, Browncroft Boulevard. And we all have it in our drop.
Okay. Yep, so the engineer submitted revised plans. Engineering's reviewing it. At this point, I think any engineering comments can be worked through in pretty mylar. We did receive the comments from Monroe County DRC. And they had no comments on the application.
Okay, so we got county comments today. And staff is... Engineering's comfortable with moving ahead on this as it stands?
Yes, we're fine.
Okay. Bob, any of... Any comments on your end?
It looked good, good to me.
Okay. So, with that, we might as well...
Yep, we do have a completed Part II, Part III EAF for your view.
All right, somebody wants to move that?
Yeah. So moved.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right, and then resolution?
Yeah. Begin to prepare the resolution.
Yeah, just approve the application.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
All right.
Good.
All right, tabled application number two, 47 Willow Pond Way. Since our last meeting, we have received memos back from our landscape consultant, our transportation consultant, and our architectural consultant. Landscape consultants... Oh, good, there we go. The comments back from the landscape consultants, he only had a couple. We are going to ask him to take another look at the buffering on the southern side that the planning board asked for the last time and see if he could provide a specific response to that question. I don't think it was adequately covered in his overall response on the... In the memo. Other than that, his comments are pretty general, mostly looking at seeing if trees can be retained on along the 441 front edge and planting some of the trees closer together for more immediate coverage.
Can you talk a little louder?
Can I talk a little... Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, his comments were generally along the lines of retaining trees along 441 and planting the evergreens closer to provide a more immediate buffer.
Okay. And to understand that we have a representative from the applicant architect to explain some of the architecture?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. Come on up and... Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll just briefly start. Peter Virus from BME Associates. Just a couple of other things. As Doug pointed out, we last Friday did provide you... We had received all the comments Doug referenced, and last Friday, we did provide updated site plans. We addressed the PRC comments. We addressed the town... This planning board's tabling resolution items. We did respond to the landscape consultant comments. And we did also get the Barton and La Judas Traffic Consultant Review. And Passaro Associates, the traffic engineer, did respond to that. So, understanding those were in Friday's drop, you do have all of that. But what we really wanted to do this evening, and thank you for your time, was I'm going to allow Craig Jensen to do one thing we did not do at the public hearing, which is walk you through the architecture design of the building, because I know the board had some interest in that. So, he'll walk you through that and then could answer any questions you may have about the architecture itself. Okay?
Okay, great.
Craig Jensen from CJS Architects in Rochester. So, you know, I guess I would start out with just the siding in the buildings. Maybe Peter's covered this before, but similar to the Willow Pond Office Park buildings, these buildings are sited, you know, the narrow end of the building facing the street, the building's running, you know, in the long direction, north-south. So, there's kind of a consistent rhythm between the Willow Pond office buildings and these buildings. And they don't appear massive from the street side, because you're looking at the kind of narrow end of the building, which I think scales them down right from the beginning and also creates a certain consistency along the street, which I think is good. Then, you know, from there, I think, you know, there are three stories. You know, Willow Pond is two stories, but it has a gable roof. So, the overall height... The Office Park, I mean. The overall height of this will be not inconsistent with what's there. And I think, you know, I know there were some discussion about gable roofs in one of the architectural review letters that came back. But I think that would just increase the height of the building. And I think keeping it a little lower actually is going to be preferred from our standpoint. And there is a real range of, you know, both flat roof and pitch roof buildings along 441, you know, both in the Village, of course, and then as you move out towards Wegmans and in that direction. The materials for this, you know, are really a combination of materials that really will work well with the surrounding buildings. We've got assimilated wood siding. We've got fiber cement. We've got brick. We've got some metal panel. So, it creates a lot of interest and a lot of texture that will break down the scale of these buildings. I mean, one of the things we're really trying to do here is not have a monolithic appearance. So, as you can see, the massing of the building and the way it's kind of got a lot of stepbacks and setbacks, it breaks it down into smaller structures, almost like a little community, as opposed to being one large massive structure. So, that combined with the building orientation is going to make this scale, I think, much more in a residential type of feel, as opposed to a larger monolithic building, which we're trying to avoid. Building heights, I think, as you know, are around 35 feet. We've got some architectural elements that project a little bit above that, but those can be used as screens for the mechanical units. It would be the condensers on the roof, things like that. So, I think they're just kind of little accent points around the building to give you a little bit of screening. What else can I tell you that you'd like to know? Well, if you have questions, go ahead, and then I can always fill in as we go.
So, if you could potentially maybe go into a little bit about neighborhood appropriateness and, you know, we live in a dynamic world, right? So, while we want to maintain in honor of our town's history and all that, there's also moving into... You know, I don't think anybody in this room doesn't own a cellphone, as an example, right?
Understood. And the site is also kind of a transitional site. You know, we've got a site that's kind of moving from smaller, single-family and, you know, cluster-type development to the Office Park. And then, pretty soon, you're at, you know, Wegmans and these larger-scale buildings. So, I think, you know, this design is really kind of a transitional design, where it's made up of a lot of smaller-scale pieces, but those pieces are aggregated together to, you know, form obviously larger buildings. So, it's, you know, turns into apartment buildings. But it doesn't really present itself as a large building to start with, right? And then aesthetically, again, I think, you know, the scale of the pieces relates back to a lot of the surroundings that are smaller scale. But again, it's a transitional building, and so it's got more contemporary elements. It's trying to be respectful of the history here, but also be its own thing. And admittedly, you know, along this stretch, there's a lot of different things going on. I mean, you could relate to the '70s, or you could relate to the '80s, or... I mean, there's a lot of different building types as you go along. I mean, obviously, you move further, further west, it gets much more traditional. But as you go east, then it changes very, very rapidly, right? So, we're kind of caught in the middle. And I think, you know, we're trying to understand how to deal with that and also build something that's going to be of today and be something that people are feeling good about, right? And not dated, you know, not be like, oh, that's another building that just looks like it's trying to emulate the building that was built 30 years ago that's next door. I don't know if that helps you.
Yeah, do you see... You know, I see a lot of structures that look similar, of similar design going up around the nation, really. Is it the type of thing that, you know, you could see this going, this kind of design go in the way of like, you know, avocado appliances from the '70s?
I understand. I mean, I think... I don't think so, as much as, you know, I think some of those colors are coming back, and you think about them now, and you think, wow, that's kind of interesting, like when you see an old car or something like that, and you can kind of feel a little bit nostalgic about it. The colors here and the forms are intended to be a little bit more timeless, right? So, the palette is super neutral, which is going to help us, you know, give us a lot more longevity. I mean, I know, like, brick is a very kind of long-lasting, enduring material, and we're putting some of that on the building. But just a neutral palette is also, you know, very kind of enduring as well, as is, you know, just a clavish siding or simple panels, right? So, I think it will last. And I don't think we're doing anything... You know, you see like some buildings from the, maybe this is '60s or '70s, with the kind of really large mansard roofs, for example, you know, on a like two-story building. And you know exactly when it's from. I don't think that's going to happen here. I think this is a lot more timeless than...
Yeah, that's kind of the... Where I was going.
Yeah, I don't see that being the case here at all.
Okay.
Because actually, if I could just say a couple of things. Can I say this for a second?
Sure.
Because I think one of the things they've done here, and if you look at this perspective view, is, and as Craig pointed out, with the massing of the building, you know, we've worked with this board a lot, and we all know the, you know, the desire. You just don't want to see a long, continuous wall. And obviously, as Craig pointed out, they've done a lot with the relief in these buildings. And you see the... You can almost see these as individual segments, and they have relief. But also, that's what he's... They've also achieved vertically also. See, a lot of times, you'll see buildings like this that'll have that relief in the facade, but maybe not as much interest in the elevation. So, they've done it... To me, they've done it both dimensionally, height and length. And my point being, while showing you this perspective, while they are using current materials, colors, everything Craig just said, this view, if you think about it, is really not that different if you're traveling eastbound on 441 and entering the four corners. And what I mean by that is if you think, especially on the south side, you have a lot of small segment buildings, various heights. Now, yes, these may don't have the driveway curb cuts, but going by there, you know, at this scale, it has that appearance. And that's really... If you look on the screen, that's really what you're creating there. It's... So, my point being, it ties into that context of everything Craig said, of really, you've created several different elements for the single building, that it's really... Well, yes, it is a single building. I think they've done a very good job in giving it interest, so that it just doesn't appear as a massive building, so...
Thank you, Peter. That was very helpful. I mean, I think Peter's right, though. It may not even be perceived as a single building, because as you look obliquely, you know, down the length of this building with the number of setbacks it has, you're going to see these things protruding out or pushing back. And you won't necessarily be able to resolve in your mind whether these are connected or not until you actually enter the complex, and then obviously it becomes clear. But looking down it from either end, you know, from Willow Pond or from 441, it may be hard to ascertain.
Right. Any other board comments? Questions?
I was just reading this. It's the first time I saw this from Chris Lopez. So, you guys didn't have any problems with his comments, and you mentioned it, but...
So, we did receive it yesterday, just like the board did. We'll respond to those. I would not say that... I would not be comfortable saying that we don't have any problems with it. And what I mean by that is, and that's why we want to respond in writing, is I think we feel, and as Craig has explained here, that we have a design that is in context with its surroundings. It is in context with Penfield and whatnot. We want to be able to explain that to you. So, I think the comments maybe were a little bit, an engineering term, too black and white in the fact versus, I think, what Craig has brought forward is a design that is contextual. And I think we want to be able to play that or lay that out for the board's consideration.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay. We're waiting on a number of things, right?
So, at this point, at this point, we did receive revised plans last Friday. As Peter alluded to, we did just get Chris Lopez's comments yesterday morning. Staff, I've not had time to really dive into Chris's memo very much at all. So, having a little bit of time to review and provide additional comments and feedbacks on the plans regarding Seeker. We did, at the end of the last meeting, the board looked to initiate a coordinated review. In this case, since the application required two involved agencies, both the planning board and the town board, the town board was informed. The town board has chosen to, or would like to, continue with an uncoordinated review. So, both boards would review the proposed project independently. With regards to Seeker, we would each conduct a separate uncoordinated review. So, this board would be able to determine its own findings and make its own findings, and that board would determine its own findings and make its own findings.
Okay. So, with that, all the other agencies, our review would be limited from a Seeker standpoint to site plan?
Yes. I mean, we do... We will have to take into context the use of the property, but it's not the primary focal point of this board. Ultimately, that is something that, you know, this board will review, but it's really up to the other board to make that determination. But this board should at least take that into consideration under the review of Seeker.
Okay. All right. I think we'd all like to be able to review the recently submitted information, and we got to wait, what's that, 30 days, right?
Yes. It's 30 days for lead agency letters. At this point, the other involved agency has reached back out, but that would give additional time for interested agencies.
All right, so I will move to table pending that additional information.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right.
All right, tabled application number three. Tabled application number three, 35 Apollonia Lane, the one on subdivision, Bramble Ridge subdivision lot. So, after the last meeting, the applicant did meet with the engineering department and with Public Works. They have come to an agreement with staff on reaching compliance with the two conditions from the previous approvals, both for the installation of the pond. It was... There was an agreement between staff and the applicant, and it'll be written into the resolution this way, that no temporary or final CVO will be granted for the new homes until the pond is installed. Likewise, with the... And Mike can correct me if I'm wrong. The... They've come up, or they will be coming up with a timetable for the repair and finishing of the roadway. They will be, as part of this approval, future approval, it'll be written in the resolution, that part of the letter of credit will be submitting a letter of credit to cover those costs to ensure that they are actually completed. Because if they're not completed, the town can always utilize a letter of credit to complete the road ourselves.
Okay. And so, this... Sounds like the meeting yielded positive results?
Yes.
To the satisfaction of engineering and DPW?
Yes. So, they're supposed to provide a schedule of when things will be completed. And then, like Doug said, that we'll be holding the final, or temporary and final CVO on the next lot, just for the pond. And then, we will be attaining a... Another letter of credit for milling and resurfacing of the road.
Okay. Okay. I mean, that was really what was holding this up? So...
Yep, we received, generally, DRC comments. None of them were substantial. They were mostly the boilerplate comments that we received, so we don't foresee any issues with those either.
Yeah. So, I think we have a draft approval.
And completed Part II, Part III EAF.
And so, I don't know if we want to... Do you have any other concerns with the application?
No.
Kelly? Okay. So, we might as well get them on their way. So, we need a motion to authorize me to sign the EAF?
Okay, motion for AJ to sign the EAF?
Tidings second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
And then, to approve the resolution?
Yes, and motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Sorry. Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Bert... Sorry, tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right.
We do have one new business item. In attendance here with us is Argini. He submitted updated rendering set. So, back in June, we did review a sketch plan application for the proposed redevelopment and expansion of Station 55 up on Empire Boulevard. Since that was completed, the board issued its sketch letter. They submitted revised and updated architecturals. What they're looking for is to get the board's feedback and comfort level with the proposed redesign.
So, do we have a comparison, side by side?
If you can bring up the ones from May, I believe the views went through five are the same.
So, it looks like the... I'm going to call them transformer pads, for lack of actual knowledge on this, moved from street side to behind the building.
Yeah.
And...
So, that was a design...
The building looks a little bit dressed up from what was proposed before. And the transformer pad fencing or shielding is a different color and maybe different materials? Is that...
Actually, if... I believe so, but we can...
Two of you want to come up? And maybe go through... You know, I have to... I have to go back to starting off that I want Mount Hope Avenue. So, that's the standard at which we're, you know, looking at. And I don't... I haven't been told why we can't have Mount Hope Avenue. If Mount Hope can have Mount Hope Avenue, or the city can, why can't Penfield? So, floor's yours.
Well, thank you for having us here. So...
You don't mean to interrupt?
Yeah.
Please introduce yourself and give your, you know, name and address for the record, so that all the millions... We do have a million views, by the way.
So, my name is Eric Thorne. I'm permitting manager for Argini, 180 South Clinton Avenue.
Mary Steblin, Labella Associates.
Okay. So, again, thank you for having us here. The last time we presented to the board, we had brought together this design, and, you know, one of the... One of the comments that we received was that Argini worked with Labella's architectural team to kind of put some outside exterior aesthetics improvements to the design. So, we really, you know, we did take that to heart. We kind of took all the comments that we've received over the number of times that we've been here, provided that to Labella's architecture team, and sort of had them put together a conceptual design using modern architectural materials that we can reasonably install inside of a substation. So, what we came up with that you're seeing here, in order to kind of meet what is around the surrounding area with the other commercial businesses nearby, they kind of have a multi-textural facade to them. So, we tried to incorporate that here with a faux wood metals... Excuse me, metal siding on the exterior with a cultured or natural stone below that surrounds the stairwell. The... This particular view doesn't, you know, show that through the fence, but other projects that we've installed that have this metal fence, you can see through it. So, you will be able to see in real life the cultured stone.
So, when you... You can see through it looking straight on, or is it...
Mainly straight on, yes.
When you look at it at an angle, or how... When you look at it at an angle, or how?
Straight on, yes. I'm sure some of the view is a little diminished at an angle through the, through the fence line, but it's not as full wall, I guess, as, as this render shows.
And the fence is made of?
The fence is a wrought iron, black metal decorative fence.
Okay.
As opposed to our standard chain link and barbed wire that we would normally use for a substation.
So the wrought iron here in this, and I don't, well, I guess I mean to beat the horse, but are you talking something like a, a flat piece of maybe inch wide wrought iron and then a, you know, half that width in between of open space, or is it that type of?
Yeah, or it's a...
Thing?
Is it the same one that's at Mount Hope?
Yes.
The fence itself, yes.
The fence, yeah.
I think that's a good example.
You have some pictures, okay. Yeah, so this is, I'll just pass these around. These are pictures of a substation that we have recently built that has that same fence along the roadside, so you can, you can see what that looks like from the, in angled view, I guess.
This...
Yes, yep.
So you have the chain link on the one side and the wrought iron on the other?
The one side is a non-conductive fence, that's what you're seeing on the, on the right side of the photo?
On the right side, this is the non-conductive, and what you're talking about is this fence?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so I see it there.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, what's, I'm gonna put my fellow members on the spot here in terms of that, initial, initial reactions to that?
I think it's a lot better than what they had.
Yeah.
I think the Mount Hope one has, it's wider, it seems wider, the spacing than this.
More open?
Is it gonna have the pillars?
It just may be the difference between a rendering.
No pillars, right?
Yeah, it could be the angle. It could just be the difference between the rendering and the real.
Yeah, so it'll be one longer fence without the pillars in it.
Yes.
Yeah, actually, the pillars do, they break it up and they make it look nice.
Yeah, would be nice. Do the pillars, definitely make it look better.
So in this case, the difference between the two stations, so the station on, proposed on Empire Boulevard, obviously, the transformers are outside, so the, this does not have the pillars in the fence line as a security aspect, because they are a feature that could be scaled, and then, you know, somebody could, could get in, put a ladder up essentially to the pillar, stand on the pillar and jump in, so just to protect the, the public, it's not included in this.
So you think there's a bigger risk on Empire than on Mount Hope, or have you had issues with that?
We had, on Mount Hope, we have had issues with homeless scaling the fence and sleeping essentially inside the fence line there.
Okay.
Would the fence at Empire be taller than this? I can't tell from scale if this is, that's a six-foot fence or an eight-foot fence, or...
Be the same size.
And the transformers on Mount Hope are inside the, it's all one big structure?
Yes, yes.
And what would be the reason that we can't do the same type of thing?
So the, this, the way that this is, this design is intended, so these are essentially modular buildings. If, you know, go back to when we first had presented this, they were five buildings that were actually separated from each other. They are pre-manufactured buildings, they, they cut down the construction cost, the construction timeline, the impact to the surrounding community, and the feedback that we had received was that the, the spacing between the buildings didn't look right, and if we could find a way to make them look more like one whole building. So we, we did talk to the manufacturers and, and find a way to do that, to be able to push them together to make it look like one building. But in that case, these, these transformers are intended to be outside of, of those, you know, pre-manufactured buildings. It's, it, it does come down to a significant cost difference between the fully indoor stations versus what this is. It, it does kind of offset with, with the ratepayers, and there is just a, there's a maintenance aspect with having, we do have some, some indoor stations, but they do pose quite a heavy thermal load, so those transformers we've, we've noticed over time do tend to wear out a lot faster than having them outside in the, the air exterior.
Well, couldn't, I mean, I don't know, say on Mount Hope, are the transformers fully undercover, or is there an area like where the transformers are located that there's no roof? It just seems like it's, seems like a building from the street, and unless you're in a helicopter or something, you don't, you don't see that there's no, no roof.
Yeah, they are fully, fully enclosed.
They're fully enclosed.
In this, yes.
Because I would think that the thermal load, you know, if you did it where you had a nice-looking structure, and the, there was no roof on that portion, it's almost as if it's in a courtyard or something, the, the thermal impact of it would be significantly reduced, would it not?
I, I mean, as far as being able to, you know, answer that, I'm not, you know, fully qualified on the, you know, that type of, of engineering aspect, but I do know that just from a company standpoint, yes, they did build the, the Station 262 on Mount Hope, but it is a station that, a station design that has been phased out by the company that we won't be building anymore, just because of the, the extent that, and, and heavy cost load that it has taken to, to build that. We do wanna keep...
So are now the folks that are serviced by this particular substation charged more?
I can't answer that question, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Per KWH than those who have a less attractive substation?
I, again, I can't answer that.
How did they rate that? Like, how did, how did the, how'd they get it, we can't?
I, I wasn't, I wasn't around when that was, when that was built and approved, so I can't really, you know, speak to exactly, you know, what went into, you know, all of those conversations. What I do know is that this new design that we've, we've taken, you know, is meant to sort of reduce the, the overall construction time and, you know, still allow for increased reliability and service for the customers, but it's, you know, it is a kind of a step up from what our, our actual standard is within the company. You know, we've, we've tried to work with the architects as was requested last time by this board to create something that was, you know, used a little more natural materials and, you know, was, was kind of, kind of fit in with the, the surrounding neighborhood along Empire Boulevard.
Do you have any similar facilities with the, the one you wanna put up on Empire Boulevard presently?
We do not, this would be the, the first one, yep.
Is there any plans to add any greenery near it? I mean, there's a lot of greenery on this one and the one in Mount Hope, and is there any plans to do that, like add shrubs, or?
Something we can certainly look at as we get further into, into the detailed design, again, this is very just, you know, conceptual with our focus to be on the, the building itself and the, the siding, but we do understand that there, you know, may be a, a green space requirement.
The, the photo that you, I guess, submitted to show the fencing, this structure doesn't appear to be a modular structure.
No, that is the transformer firewall that you see surrounding the two transformers on our, our render.
I see.
You should be able to see the building in the back, the far background of that photo, and if you wanna go to, if you wanna look at it on Google Earth, I can give you the address.
Yeah.
So 101 Y End Crescent, W-Y-A-N-D. I don't know how up to date the, yeah, so that is, that's the modular building that you see to the, to the left of that photo, and then it eventually gets a brick facade. Google Earth's not quite as up to date on this station.
Yeah, they'll have a car going by tomorrow getting new photos.
It's because they listen to me say that, too, right?
They're all listening, all the time. So, and I wanna hear other board members' opinions. I'll say that the most recent submission is definitely much better than the original submission. I like where you're going with the fencing, I like the transformers being moved to the, to the rear of the site. I'm still gonna go back to Mount Hope and say, jeez, we certainly, in the town of Penfield, provide Argenee with some significant revenue, and probably people, but you know, I'm not gonna say that there's high ratepayers here, but that, that building is very, I mean, it's so much better. Kelly, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, like, I definitely agree, it just looks like a warehouse to me, it doesn't really look like anything special or just a drab-looking warehouse. And there are a lot of substations that are, that are made to look like houses, or the Mount Hope one, or, you know...
Right. Creativity was used to, and, and there's some here, but, and I know that you can even get modular structures that are, you would never know that it's a modular structure. Now, whether it's a special purpose or not, that I can't speak to, to that, so I don't wanna come off as if I'm a know-it-all or something in, in that regard. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're good, that's all I had to say. I agree, though, it's not anything that's representative of, you know, that area, I don't feel, it just looks like it's another warehouse, so...
Yeah, and as, as Empire's redeveloped and, you know, new applicants that come in, we ask for stepped-up architectural features. Bob, any comments?
I think it would certainly be an improvement if the transformer pad areas, you know, as we touched on, could be closed up, so it would be more like a courtyard, so the visual from the street, you wouldn't be able to see in there.
Right.
And see it. So it could be, you know, obvious...
Even if it wasn't necessarily closed in fully, but visually...
Just boxed in along the sides.
Right.
Now, obviously, trucks have to get in there, but there's overhead doors. I know architecturally, there's a substation by High Falls. It's just basically a masonry structure, but it's totally enclosed, and, you know, I don't know enough what degree, you know, that substation is working compared to what you need at this location, but I know that has some sort of overhead doors for the trucks, you know, that sort of thing.
Terry?
Well, it's, you know, I mean, it's definitely not what we want, definitely. I mean, modular, I don't know how you make modular work, to tell you the truth. I mean, gonna be, it's gonna be seen, it's right there on Empire Boulevard, I'm not a fan of that modular stuff, but, you know, I wish I could see it someplace else, maybe, change my mind, but, I mean, I think you're gonna need a lot of landscaping to kind to, you know, block it off a little bit, hide it if, if it would even work, to tell you the truth, but yeah, I don't, you know, I mean, obviously, I'd like the Mount Hope area and stuff too, but, I mean, we're like far apart, I think, in that compared to the modular, you know, so...
So would everyone agree that they're at least moving in the right direction?
Oh, yeah, it looks a lot better.
Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks. Okay, anything else?
It's all ahead for you guys tonight.
All right, well, thanks everyone for coming.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, guys. Thank those of you millions watching from near and far, and we will adjourn.